Are you leading this parade?
I couldn't, or you couldn't? How much energy you're feeling? I'm not feeling that much.
By the way, what are we doing exactly?
Yeah, I'll tell you. All right, I'll take the hell.
This was like a...
Al Haye. Okay, have you ever been into one of these interviews?
I remember Al Haye. I'm the president.
Yeah, no, that's me. I'm in charge. Okay, so this is our endorsement interview. I'm gonna... Should I just start? Okay. All right. This is... Everybody take a centering breath. This is one... This is Group D for our endorsement interview for City Council District 4. We have so many candidates that we've had to break them up into different panels.
We've noticed.
Yeah, yeah, it's exciting. So what's gonna happen today is we're gonna ask each of you to give us about a two-minute introduction to talk about your bio, especially tell us what you've been doing, do now, and why you want this job. And then we're gonna have a kind of a free-ranging discussion about the issues, okay? So why don't we... We'll go this way this time, just for grins. Start here. Two minutes, name and bio and reason for running.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Talk to you or talk to her.
Talk to her.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Joe. Last name Alphone. I'm from New Orleans. I've worked on two reelection for president campaigns, did a ballot access around the country for him, and also was a national organizer in the eastern part of the country, putting on campaign rallies with him. One of the 100 most influential men of the 20th century. I find that throughout my life, as a kid, I read the newspaper. I was always civically engaged. I ran for junior class president in high school, my only election that I've won.
In New Orleans?
Yeah, in New Orleans, Riverdale High School. It's in the New Orleans metro area. The mid-city New Orleans, grew up in the inner city of New Orleans. Went to LSU. Ran for student government president twice there. There's articles about me when I set a thousand newspapers on fire after one of my elections. Question-and-answer interview, similar to this, I presume. My words were taken out of context and kinda made me upset, and so I put them in a free speech alley, set them on fire, went to court for it, a freedom of speech case, and I won. They recognized the validity of my position. I guess I just have two minutes here. Lived in China, Russia, South Korea, Malta, and Canada. English teacher, a lot of world experience. I'd like to implement ideas from my life experiences, living around the country. I've lived... Went to 24 schools from first to 12th grade.
Twenty-four?
That's right. Yeah. I've lived in more places than anyone that I've ever met. Moved every six months or a year for like the last 20, 25 years, being here in Portland.
How long you been here?
I've been here for two and a half years, and this is the longest I've ever lived in one place in my life.
What keeps you moving?
I feel like there's a whole world out there, and it's like I like to understand everything that's going on. And this is why I'm not Democrat or Republican, or don't take sides, not left or right, and why I see myself as a bridge of ideas. So, yeah. The reason why I'm running is exactly that, just I have ideas from my life experiences, from living in Asia, primarily China, that I would like to bring connectivity of... Be it pedestrian, crosswalks, similar to the Shibuya Crossing in Tokyo, or their Rhino Art District mural art walls of Denver. I find that there's many ideas, like even like I'm really into like movement, dancing, martial art type of movement, that is self-created style. I can move in lots of directions and whatnot. And that I would like to bring like dance zones to Portland as well, too, like a way for people to relieve stress, like just getting moving. This is the reason why I wanna have like a speaker system throughout the city of like nature sounds. That I think that if people were walking, they heard like the sound of nature while they were walking and bring down like the stress level. I think that people just need to move more and exercise more. And yeah, these are the things that I really promote for this city.
All right. Great. Okay. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Bob Callahan. Portland is a great city. I'm happy to call it my home. By stark contrast, I was born here, and I've lived almost all of my life here. I went to high school at Jesuit, I went to U of O in Eugene, came back to do postgraduate work in land use planning and administrative law at PSU, and then got a JD at Lewis and Clark College. From that, I started practicing law 36 years ago, here in northwest Portland. All this is in the district. I still practice in the same office that I started in. I'm a community lawyer. I do civil and criminal stuff. I work with judges and prosecutors. I go with treatment providers and psychiatrists and psychologists and families, mainly mentally ill, drug addicted, homeless people. I have hands-on experience, having worked through that. I wanna run because I love the city, and I know that this is a major transition point for the city government. And I think that voters, when they brought in the new system, are asking for change. They don't want the same system anymore. And I think I'd bring that change, you know? I've got a deep understanding of the city, of the history, some of the problems of it, some of the positives of it, and I wanna make a difference. That's why I'm here.
Have you run for elected office before?
Once. In fact, I interviewed in this very room. In 2018, I ran for circuit court judge.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I didn't win, but...
I got 90,000 votes. One of the things that it told me is that Molnoma County is a huge county, from Bonneville Dam to Sawby's Island. And this race in District 4 is a breeze by comparison.
Because it's manageable?
Absolutely. And... I'm very happy to be at home basis.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
All right. Hi, I'm Mike Tenapoli. Also run for City Council District 4. I'm a lifelong Portlander, born here in Portland, was born at Bets Kaiser before it became Adidas. It was one of our first hospitals. I grew up in Hillsborough, started my career, my family, you know, most of my adult life there in Hillsborough. I'm a family man, got two daughters, moved back to Portland, you know? Been in Portland now for 15 years properly, but you know, it's always been kind of my playground when I was a kid, my parents.
Where'd you go?
What's that?
Where did you leave?
Hillsborough.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Hillsborough, back to Portland.
Yeah, back to Portland. I'm a union tradesperson, started my career as a telecommunications technician, working on our nation's infrastructure for television, radio, and telephone. I've worked all over the country doing that, working on, you know, high-level industrial and community infrastructure work, which is, you know, by design, an installation practice that we're looking forward 50 years when things have to be built, which, you know, taught me a lot about looking at how we should be implementing things for a city because we need to be thinking long-term, not just triaging real problems right now, although that's important. But throughout my career as a telecommunications worker, regulation changes kinda moved what I do under the guidance and regulation of the Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. So I went from being a union telecommunications person to being a licensed journeyman electrician, which I still currently have my license. Don't work with them anymore. My career changed in 2009 with the whole housing crisis. Bernie Madoff, that hit my family as well as a lot of working class, but I mean, hit the nation hard, that kinda...
Because construction stopped?
Well, the construction stopped, but you know, a lot of people... I lost retirement money because of it, but that whole housing crisis and the grift of...
You weren't in the Madoff funds, were you?
I had Countrywide Financial as one of the loans. And so the house that I had in Hillsborough ended up being short sold back to the bank to be able to get out of the problems that were caused by that terrible greed. But that being said, it changed my career, you know? I had to make a pivot. I could have continued to be on the road, but as a family person, that's always hard. I found my way working in the Oregon's film and television industry, which is where I currently still find my career path, doing live events, film and television, making content creation. It's really amazing. And you know, the thing that I love about it and also the trades is the army of people that come together to specialize in building buildings, making movies, making commercials, having these shows come together. It's a great... There's someone with this great idea to bring these things together, but it takes an army of people to develop it, make it happen, and bring it to fruition. I found a lot of love in that, so I've continued my path in just taking my electrical skills and continuing on the work of live events. And now I'm a small business owner. I work as a stagehand, and I do events all over the region. But I'm also a small business owner. I get to employ some people for some events, and we just get to continue to help clients, great clients that are, you know, amplifying really good things in their community, projects, voices, and people.
Do you have any civic... Have you done any civic work, volunteer boards?
Yeah, back when I was in Hillsborough, I was a precinct committee person for the Washington County Democrats. That kinda led to an opportunity to sit with the city of Hillsborough on their citizen advisory board, giving input on conditional reviews of permanent applications, which was really fascinating. Had a lot of great questions that were implemented. But here, now that I'm in Molnoma County, I've stepped up and I am a precinct committee person for Molnoma County, and just continue to help support, you know, any issue, organization, or project that I feel passionate about helping in any way I can.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's a little bit about me.
Okay, great. Topic that's on everybody's mind is homelessness. Could you each talk about skills you might bring to solving it, is a strong word, improving situation, and what your approach might be? And we'll go this way this time. So you're on again.
Yeah, this is a big topic. I mean, it's on the forefront of every discussion I have with these endorsement interviews and with the community. You know, one thing that I hear a lot is when we talk about homelessness, it gets lumped into this category of addiction and that, you know, this assumption or maybe this misconception that everyone on the streets is suffering from an addiction issue. So it's, you know, it might be something that they've done to get there. But we have thousands of young people who have turned out of the foster care system. They've aged out, they've turned 18, and we, you know, through this pandemic and the Work From Home Revolution and, you know, some education issues, they, you know, we have a lot of young people who have aged out of the foster care system without having the skills, the resources, and the opportunities to embark on their independence. And a large portion of them have ended up on the streets. Some of that may lead to addiction, but the real problem was they shouldn't have turned out without opportunities. We have a system to support them. We should continue to do so. So we need to address the homelessness issue, but we also need to address the issues that are enabling or forcing people into these difficult situations. We need to implement a citywide wraparound type program. Right now, we have a lot of wonderful organizations doing creative work, but they're very compartmentalized from addiction services, housing services. But the individual who's suffering these, that's working on trying to get back to their independence, they, once they get through, you know, some addiction treatment and they find themselves kinda on the path through independence, they're sort of forced on their own. You have to figure out now getting a job. You have to figure out how to get housing. And we need a safety net that's in some way following and checking in with these individuals so we can, as a city, direct them and nurture them to the right path so that they can find independence. We also have a huge fentanyl crisis, and if we don't take a task force approach and treat it as a state of emergency, the fentanyl is gonna continue to be poisoning people on the streets. It's a free-flowing pipeline of illicit drugs to the city. Until we stop that and stem the flow of those illicit drugs poisoning the people, we're just gonna continue to throw good money after bad. And it's like putting a Band-Aid on a gaining wound. We need to find the fentanyl distribution pipeline.
Okay, all right.
Great. First of all, I wanted to point out that homelessness is not a Portland issue. Every city on the West Coast is struggling with it. And there are larger forces than just Portland that are creating this. I put homelessness in the category of public safety, and it's one of four elements for me. And it's economic, tragedy, mental illness, drug abuse, and then crime. And when I say drug abuse, I distinguish it from drug use. I think when Measure 5110 was passed by the voters, people had an idea of a friend of theirs or somebody they knew in college that was pulled over, had a joint, and got into the justice system, and it ruined their lives. So they brought it in. And it didn't really deal with the long-term drug abuser. And I'll say that a drug abuser is one who is often publicly intoxicated with drugs and using drugs in public. I passed a guy on this morning on the way here, just two blocks away. He's smoking a pipe on the sidewalk. Back when marijuana was first legalized, there was a deal cut that in the legalization of it, there wouldn't be public use. Within a week, there are people smoking joints down the sidewalk. Probably the hardest category is the mix between mentally ill and drug users. They find, they get off their meds, they start self-medicating, and they don't know how... They have a problem. When you get them off the drugs and on their prescription drugs, they feel better, so they stop taking them again. And it's an endless cycle. The economically disadvantaged group is probably the easiest to deal with because something's happened, maybe medical bills, or they lost their job or something. And those are the people that it's pretty easy to give them a boost back into the former life that they had. And then there's the other category that I deal with all the time, and it's criminals. There are criminals that live in the homeless community. They like it there. They know what they're doing, and they're the majority of the problem for the police. So... One of the things that I think, especially in the wake of the Grants Pass case that just came out of the Supreme Court, that there has to be an approach that the city takes to deal with our homelessness. First of all, getting the tents and the camping off the streets, off the public place. I have people camping in my driveway, camping in my front yard. Just, I live around the corner. Yeah. And I've had it, you know? I clean feces off of my sidewalk. I pick up needles. It's a crisis, and especially for those that are immersed in it on a day-to-day basis. So if we zone areas that the city has identified as places for camping, we're satisfying the requirements of the Supreme Court, and then build essentially a stair-step approach to moving into some sort of permanent housing. You have a basic place to stay, sanitation, some degree of safety. And then as you move into things like following more rules, some people call them barriers, but things like no drug use, then you move to maybe a motel room or apartment or something. And then you have another layer where you're on a track to get a job and move maybe into your own apartment. And I think one of the real long-term problems with legislation is that inherently we have to generalize and make rules that apply to everybody, and that's not the case when you have these very distinct groups of people. And so I see the solution to that is to try and move discretion down to the people that are working hands-on with people, treatment providers, probation officers, even the police, you know? Every day, police make discretionary calls about what to do.
Do you think they don't have the power to... I mean, they don't have the power to do that now?
I think 4002 helped a great deal when it re-criminalized simple possession.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So that was a good move.
I believe so. I think that there's more work to be done, clearly. But things like... I had a client. He is in a residential treatment program, heroin addiction since he was 14. He was a fentanyl user. He wanted to go into treatment. He went into a residential treatment program, but he voluntarily left. And I asked him why. And he said, "Because all the drug dealers were hanging out at the treatment center." Because it's a built-in clientele.
Where was he?
VOA thing. But what 4002 has done in the manner that we did it with schools, no sales of drugs within a thousand feet of the schools, or you have a heightened penalty if you're convicted.
Do this name for...
We've done that with... We've done it. We've done it with treatment programs. We've done it with parks. And I think that one of the premier obligations of government is to do things for people that they can't do for themselves. And that's why I put it in a public safety overall category because we need to deliver a sense of safety and comfort for people in their homes and their neighborhoods. And these would be steps to do that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, homelessness, drugs and crime, they're all created when the streets are quiet, when there's no vibe, and when there's no aesthetic to where it is that you're walking around. Being from New Orleans, I never fathomed that you could actually like walk in a public park like in the middle of the night and that there would be no issues. Upon like moving to China, like I just, I couldn't believe it. Like I lived in Beijing, Shanghai, Sanya. Well, I also lived in Moscow, also outside of Seoul, South Korea. And in all of these places, it's like people, like families, kids, they, women, walking alone, together, whatever the case may be, they walk in public places at night, in the middle of the night, and there's no issues. And the reason why there's no issues is because there's a community involvement. There's like, there's a vibe to their city. And so whenever there's pedestrian traffic, whenever there's people walking around, then homelessness, drugs, and crime just kinda just dissipates. And so I find that my programs, such as like giving tax incentives for art mural walls, creating like colors, art pictures, like from businesses, like allowing them to have an incentive to bring about this type of aesthetic downtown, that would be like a really big improvement in itself. The nature sounds, creating like some sort of like bubble that people are walking in, like listening to that would bring this stress level down. And when I lived in Moscow, I really found it fascinating, like the way that they decorate the streets for Christmas and for like seasonal holidays, because that's another one of my programs, is seasonal lights. There should always be seasonal lights up. I mean, like it gives so much vibe. And when in Moscow, like the people, they don't realize, like, you know, that there's a problem in their city, like they're not as willing to, you know, like create chaos when there's lights and like a feeling. Another thing with Moscow, during the totalitarian era, like the communist era there, whatever you wanna say, past, present, but their subway stations are like the most like gorgeous, you know, like frescoes and tiles and all of that. And so like when you're there, like in the subway station, you might be like, you know, struggling with making ends meet or whatnot, but then you look around, you're like, "Okay, well, my city's doing something for me to make me feel like things are not that bad or treating me well."
So just on this note, like this is a... So what do you think about the city's plans for Darcelle 15 Plaza?
Well, you know, I don't have like specific answers to all of like the questions here, you know?
Do you know what it is?
I don't know Darcelle Plaza specifically.
Okay.
So, as I'm sure all three of you know, the...
If I might finish what I was saying then, because you wrapped it up. Yeah, okay. I think that also the fact that the business community has vacated the city and that they're not really adding their commitment, the business community's not contributing either. The largest vacancy rate of any city in the country. So what brings community? No, I don't know each and every plaza, and no, I don't know each and every neighborhood and street of the city. But what I do know is that the business community and the city needs to create programs to get people walking.
I think that's what they're trying to do here. And you know, the question is Darcelle, whether you fence it. Right? That's a big, that's a big deal. Anyway. If you're interested in that kind of thing, you should really follow up on that one because it's kind of a marquee. What were you gonna say?
I was gonna ask the following. This is a legislative role. The management of city bureaus is being handed over to the city administrator. The three of you, if elected, would be lawmakers. I'd like each of you to tell me the first piece of legislation, in other words, a city resolution that, or ordinance that you would introduce... Resolution's the wrong word. An ordinance that you would introduce into city council. Joe, first.
The very first thing that I would do upon entering office.
The first resolution or ordinance you would submit.
I need a moment to think about that, if I could give a second.
Sure.
I'll start.
Great.
I'll use the second. First thing that I would want to do is I wanna close the... I wanna draft a resolution. I wanna change the policy that's already written. But our inclusionary housing rules that we put into place, a lot of developers right now have a loophole when they made a promise to the people of Portland and to build these buildings, they got tax incentives, rebates, didn't have to do certain things like providing parking that were previous rules for these buildings to go up. So a lot of accommodations were given to builders to get these buildings propped up because we need new buildings in Portland and we need available housing. The inclusionary zoning rule said that if you build this building and 30, 40, 50% of it is available to the people of Portland as affordable, under the Affordable Housing Guidelines, you get these rebates. And then fast forward to the Work From Home Revolution, the people leaving Portland, they have a lot of empty space. So they pay a fine of five, six, or seven million dollars, depending on the percentage and size of these buildings. And the city said, "You no longer have to offer affordable housing." You get a pass, never have to discuss it again because the loophole is in the policy that allows these developers the buyout plan. Close the loophole immediately, and then begin the work of, do we claw back some of those incentives? Or do we... We use the power of the position that we have to get the people who have already built these buildings to bring those units back onto the market as affordable so that people have an option in Portland. So January 2nd, 2025, when we get started, that's one of the first things I wanna bring to the table. Close that loophole on inclusionary housing. On developers. I'm gonna jump a little bit outside of your question. And rather than making a new proposal, I would push hard to enforce our existing laws. I think that there are a lot of things that are eroding our city and our life well-being here, one of which is get the traffic patrol back on the streets and make the streets safe again.
You're talking about the traffic division of the Portland Police Bureau?
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's been fully restored, but isn't it back on the streets?
It's headed that way. And all you need to do is spend a couple minutes on the freeway and realize that this has gone on way too long. Another thing that is near and dear to me in this neighborhood is graffiti. I'm sick of it. You know, it's destroying in a sense of our common environment. And while I have to say, you know, Banksy and his art is beautiful stuff, and it strikes me in my soul, but that is not graffiti. And I think that we've just let it go on too long. But that is not graffiti. Um, and, and, and I think that we've just let it gone on too long. And one of the things that I would do is I would say, okay, if, if you've been arrested for, for doing graffiti on somebody's private property or on public property, you're going to be arrested, you're going to get a jail sentence. Okay. And I would say something like two weeks. And for every day that you spend on a graffiti cleaning crew, you reduce your sentence by two days. Okay.
Did you see, uh, Renee Gonzalez's proposal on this?
I, I, I've heard of it. I haven't seen it yet. Yeah.
It's similar.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's interesting that we're talking about this because Jean-Michel Basquiat, um, he would tag public buildings with the tag S A M O, same old shit. And so, uh, he got his notoriety from being in that scene in New York City. The difference between nineteen seventies, early nineteen eighties, New York City versus Portland, which lots of similarities, is that the art community seduced his image, brought it into this commercialization and now his paintings sell for a hundred million dollars. Same thing with Kate, Keith Haring, um, he, um, defaced subway stations with his art. I mean, like that this was not promoted or, you know, endorsed by the, the New York City Subway, you know, Patrol or, you know, Metropolitan or whatnot, that, um.
And now, now it's, now they're on the New Jersey Nets jerseys or the Brooklyn Nets jerseys. It's, it's true.
Yes.
Uh, but what, what policy proposal do you have in mind?
Well, uh, what I was saying before about, um, giving tax incentives to, for businesses to, if they have a wall available. I think we need to give these people jobs. I think that the people that are graffiti artists, they're not graffiti vandals. I think that these people do have talent and it, they, like, you know, what's, what's worse, them selling drugs or having like weapons or spray paint or, you know, paint in their hand colors to bring about a vibe, you know, pedestrian traffic in the city. And so if we gave some attention to our artists, celebrate our artists instead of incarcerating them, celebration, not incarceration, that if we gave them this attention, gave these business tax breaks, then we'd be giving them jobs and instead of criminalizing them. And then it would be bring a unique aspect to this beautiful city, like, hey, look what they're doing there. They're, they're commissioning their street artists for jobs to paint the, the CBD and bringing rebellious, uh, you know, artistic types, um, with the business community and creating a, a dialogue. Um, so there's, there's that. Um, and then I, I just think that, um, we just need to, uh, just, we just need to treat, treat our arts. And then also when I had mentioned the dance zones, I mean, these are just very visionary ideas here that I think if we actually like had the city give money to our DJs and our music community, people that like are in that sort of background, and then we created like spaces, like where people are walking around downtown and that there was a DJ playing music to bring people's stress level down and that the city was paying the music community to go out there and then people could dance around. I could even. Have you been to Silent Disco? I have, yeah. I went to the Girl World Music Festival the last two years and they have that as one of the, the things there. I think it's a great, great idea. Yeah.
We're gonna do a lightning round. We got about a little less than ten minutes left.
Wow.
Um, so let's do this lightning round. Uh, so I'm gonna ask for one-word answers. Uh, we'll see if we can manage that. Uh, do you think?
Our yes and no included.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, do you think the Portland Police Bureau needs fewer cops, more cops, or has the right number of cops now?
We need more police. That's one word.
Yeah, it's okay.
More, more.
More.
Yeah.
More.
Okay. Uh, did the Oregon Legislature do the right thing by re-criminalizing fentanyl?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Are you in support of the Clinton Triangle, the city's first task site or large tiny home encampment?
Oh, yes. I don't know enough.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, which member of city council do you believe has done the most for this city? Which current member of city council? In the past, like, let's say over the past two years, who do you think has done the most for this city?
Carmen. I, I would say Nick Fish, but that's not current.
No, that's not the last two years. He was great.
Um, I'll pass.
Okay.
I went down to a city council meeting. I gave a speech against renewing the lease of the Moda Center and all I can say is, you know, I'm not from here and whatnot, but the person who gave me the best vibe was the Mingus guy.
Okay, great. Uh, do you support the city taking, uh, dollars from what's known as PSEF, the Climate Fund, and moving them into existing bureaus to backfill their budgets?
No, no.
I, I didn't hear the question. I was distracted.
Oh, that's okay. Do you support, uh, the city taking money from the Climate Fund, that is PSEF, and moving it into existing bureaus to backfill their budgets?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, and then the last one, and you can elaborate on this one a little more than one word if you like, is based on your knowledge of City Hall, what's the one bureau you would most like to audit?
Hmm.
Doesn't mean that you actually think that it's broken or corrupt or wasting money, but you'd like to know more and open up the hood.
The Bureau of Planning Sustainability.
Great.
The same.
It seems like the Housing Bureau because there's not affordable housing and all of that and that there's just a big crisis, like, you know, hourly wait workers need, need to have that. So, yeah.
Great. Um, our last question, unless you have more, is what we call the fun question. And, uh, it's just to attempt to get to know you a little better. And, uh, the question is, what were you like in high school? What were you best known for in high school?
Hmm. I was kind of an introvert. I was in the band. I was in the choir. Uh, I did a lot of like marching band stuff. Um, I think I was probably best known for just being in the jazz band and just being able to fill in on any instrument because, you know, I don't play anything really great, but I play a lot of instruments. And so I was kind of known in high school as a person that could just pick up any instrument and making music happen. So, uh, I think that's, that's probably the answer. This is a funny question because next week is my fiftieth high school anniversary.
Are you gonna go to the reunion?
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
Which high school?
Judge of.
Yeah.
So what are you gonna be, what are they gonna remember you for?
Uh, it's, it's really funny because we've, we've gone, I remember the, the twentieth year and the thirtieth year. I don't know. I, and the fortieth year, so it's, and, and in the twentieth year, I got voted the most changed, which I thought was, uh, interesting. Uh, in high school, I was really into the art department and I was a, a ceramicist. And there were a group of us that, uh, ran the ceramics department and really enjoyed it.
Nice.
Joe?
Uh, well, I guess because I moved around so much and everything, um, I, I'm very adaptable because I was always the new person wherever it is that I went. But, um, the last, well, in Austin and New Orleans, I was on the speech and debate team. Um, and then also, uh, so I guess student government, um, I beat the two most popular girls in the school. And I had all the rejects and outcast people in that timeframe that like, were like, okay, yeah, great. Um, that, um, and then just, uh, moving around and being adaptable.
Great. All right. Well, gentlemen, thank you so much for your time.
Hold on.
It was a pleasure to meet you. Thanks.
Good to meet you.
Very is.
Coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.